Check one, check two, check three, check four. Do it again. Check one, check two, check three, check four. Check one, check two, check three, check four.
The subtitles isn't.
Check, check. Check one, check two, check three, check four. 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 Check one, check two.
Okay.
I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. This is our meeting for Tuesday, May 14, 2024. We are meeting here in the Nat U Hill Room at the Monroe County Courthouse. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. And with that, I want to note that we have one counselor remote, our own Jeff McKim, member at large, is remote joining us. Counselor, are you hearing us okay?
I am indeed. Do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you great. So we're off to a good start. Here in the Nat U Hill, I have Counselor Iverson, Counselor Crossley, Counselor Hawke, Counselor Munson, and I would note that Counselor Wiltz is absent this evening. All right, I'd ask all to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much.
We're going to now move on to adoption of agenda. And I just want to note that we have item 12A and 12B ARPA requests. I would ask unanimous consent that we could table that to the May 28th agenda, being given that there is no request before us. Any objections?
No objections.
Without objections, so ordered. I'd also ask to add two items. I'm going to do these one at a time. I'm going to ask to add an item regarding the recent communication from the Capitol Improvement Board, otherwise commonly known as the CIB. And this will be an opportunity for any counselor that wish to make a comment on the communication from the Capitol Improvement Board if they so wish to. And this will be following item eight on the agenda. Any objections to adding that to tonight's agenda?
No objections.
No objections, so ordered. And then I'll also ask, we have a PAC recommendation. I believe they were meeting yesterday, right?
That's correct.
A discussion in consideration of a soil and water job description. I'm going to ask that that will be placed before item 13 on the present agenda. And I know that's been in consideration for some time, and that's why we're trying to move it.
Yeah.
I need to see which one's 13 because I had asked for a presentation from the council office having to do with the additional expenses that we have added that would be ongoing. So when, when will that be presented? That's the whole point in that was to have full information before we vote on decisions.
Absolutely. I don't know if this helps Counselor Hawke, but that position that Soil and Water Conservation is asking for this evening was in the last budget. So it's been presently budgeted if that information helps you to know. But if not, we could ask for staff to do that during that, but that item.
I do not have the numbers that, that was done. I've worked on that all day, trying to get, you know, where everybody started in the budget and where everybody ended up. I don't have all of that. I can get it to everyone following the meeting. But I, like I said, if I didn't know about it until yesterday, and I just was not able to complete it timely.
Sure. Okay, so we will not be able to hear that. And I should have noted that I'd asked Michelle that, and she had told me that. That's on me.
So we can put this on the agenda for our next meeting?
We certainly could. Do you think that's enough time to get that?
You could. Just if you do that, though, that delays it going to WIS. And if you want it back in time for the June meeting.
She means, she means the additional information.
Additional information. Yes, I can have that by the next meeting. Yes.
The only reason I suggested that is because that gives us full information before we vote on that new. So I'll just decline to vote in favor of that. Because with everybody we have on staff, if we can't figure out what we have included and put in extra dollars for this, this year, in addition to what we started out the year with, there's something amiss.
Well, absolutely. So we'll hear item 13 with note that this has been budgeted in the current county budget for this year. All right. Any objections to adding that before item 13?
I don't even know which one 13 was, so.
Item 13 is a food and beverage tax advisory commission report from Counselor Munson.
Okay, great.
All right, hearing no objections, so ordered. All right. Any other changes to the agenda before we get going this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to public comment. Before we do on public comment, we're going to hear from Bob Patty with Enhance. You all recall Enhance was here recently. If you want to come forward, Mr. Patty, he's going to give us an update. He's also got Jen Pearl with him from our own Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And so he's got a special announcement he asked to make, and we're going to give him some time to make that to us. Welcome, Mr. Patty. It's good to have you back in the Nat U Hill, as well as Ms. Pearl.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the time you've given me here. Unfortunately, I'm coming to tell you that Enhanced is not going to be pursuing the project at the former GE refrigerator plant, which Cook has been renovating. We are greatly disappointed, but I wanted to come forward, let you know that, in fact, we are discontinuing that effort and kind of how we got here. We did have a number of different ways that we felt the, the plan would move forward. And unfortunately, none of those have worked out. There's been a lot of money being put into semiconductor development in the US and worldwide. We are disappointed that we were not able to get CHIPS funding, and there were some other avenues that were open to us that did not pan out also. The private funding at this point is very concerned that the huge investment made worldwide now in semiconductors, it may result in a glut in the market. And that has turned off a lot of the private investment. Almost a half a trillion dollars now has been put forward in government funding worldwide, and that will double to triple capacity of semiconductors over the next three years. And anyone would say that that is far greater capacity than the demand would sustain. So as a small company, we are seeing pullback in people's desire to venture into the market at this point. Nothing has changed in our opinion of that site. I think it would be a great site for advanced manufacturing. We are continuing with our plans in the Odin Westgate. None of that has changed. That money was separately raised. We have it enhanced, and we are moving forward. And we will go into production there at the beginning of next year. Our workforce is growing. Equipment is being installed. So we are still dedicated to being in Indiana. Unfortunately, a plant of the scale that we had planned at the Cook site is just not in the cards, at least today.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate you telling us. Ms. Pearl, did you want to add any comments?
So thank you so much for having us here today. Because this was something we originally had announced publicly here. We wanted to be able to share that update here as well. And although that's not the news that we had hoped to bring today, we're always very grateful for the partnership with all of you, with great companies like Enhanced and others. And we want to be as transparent as possible, you know, about the projects that we have going on in the community. So a few things that I'll say is while this may not be moving forward, the Westgate area is still within our labor market because there's a large proportion of people down in that area that live in our community. So we're really encouraged to hear about, you know, the continued commitment there. The other things that I'd like to mention is that there've actually been some very good things that have come out of this process. One is gathering the community in conversation around what's possible, not only for innovation along the corridor that runs from Indy to Crane, but also within our community. It has also reframed how we see the former GE site and the Westside Employment Zone. And so we are actually very grateful to Cook Group and others because we're looking at how we can use that as a springboard to promote that for future employment growth as well. Another reminder that we would kind of share, and I will also defer to attorneys for the county as well on this, but sometimes the public has questions about tax abatements. They're like, oh, was funding given away for this or what have you? Whenever we do a tax abatement in partnership with government and a company, it is contingent on performance. So when both parties are able to, you know, fulfill what they had hoped to do, that's when it triggers the abatement. So it's not like a check was written or anything like that had happened. So if anyone has questions or concerns about that, we're happy to talk more and would also defer as well to, you know, the county attorney. And then apart from that, and I know that Councilmember Deckard and I had talked about this earlier, but we do not let our foot off the gas when it comes to creating opportunities for our community. We know that you cannot control global markets or control, you know, federal decisions or other things like that. And things, business conditions can change. We still have 11 projects throughout the community that we've worked on the last few years that are still bearing fruit. And we still have some great targets for what we want to go after for growing future opportunities. And we remain a partner both for our employers and for the government in good times and other times as well. So we are, we are here for that and also happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much to both of you. We'll see if counselors had any questions or comments. Counselor Munson?
I'll comment that we're very glad that your Odin project is, is going forward. And who knows, maybe things will turn and we'll see you back in Bloomington.
I would certainly like nothing better.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I just wanted to say it was such a pleasure hearing you speak the last time you came. And it just made everybody feel so positive. And you still have that smile on your face, and it's got to be a little harder this time around. But we appreciate your presence and, and the fact that you gave Monroe County a shot at this. And I know that you had to have given it all that you had to try to make it work. And maybe things will turn around in the future, and you'll think of us again. And so good luck in all your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Iverson?
I just want to offer, you know, similar remarks. I wish we were here on better circumstances, but obviously, things are outside of a lot of our control on some of these things. But I just want to echo the remarks my colleagues have made. We're not going to let our foot off the gas on our end, and we're going to continue to move forward towards economic vitality in this community. So thank you for coming here and thanks for your transparency.
Counselor McKim?
Yes, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you, Mr. Petty. And I do hope, I echo my colleagues, that I do hope that we'll still be able to work together in the future. I also thank you for having me, encouraging me to learn a lot more about advanced packaging. It was, it was quite an education.
Thank you.
I, I want to note if counselors will let me just for a moment that I appreciate very much, Ms. Pearl, when this began to arrive as, the news that it is, came really fast to us to just say, hey, be prepared. And then if I recall right, when, after informing as many public officials as possible, just to kind of keep this on your horizon, and I appreciate that. I appreciate also that you came in here with bad news. I, I will say this, and Ms. Pearl had to hear my soliloquy on this. I'll try to keep it shorter this time. I'm a child of the RCA Thompson job losses in this community. And that means that every time we can attract someone like you to create jobs here for this public official, we will go after that wholeheartedly. When we lost those jobs, it devastated families, including my own. So job creation, job protection is in my heart. And so I always want you coming in here with a smile, and we will always work with you, at least as long as I'm sitting here. We will work with you to try to figure out what we can do to, so the families here don't have that moment. And so we'll try to get you next time. And we hope Odin goes really well and expands up here and other things. But for Ms. Pearl, she's had to hear that a million times. That is so important to diversify our workforce in any way we can beyond just what's at the sample gates or elsewhere. And I know that she's going after that with, with all due speed, and I'm just grateful. Any other counselors? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, opportunity to speak to Ms. Pearl. Councilmember Deckard, speaking of some of his background, some of his memories. My background, as you might know, is in the construction industry. That's what my family, that's why I was raised in the construction industry and the home builders. And I started out being a Realtor in the 1970s. And so I really, really respect the kind of jobs that come when we have other growth, and that allows our home builders and our workforce to have more opportunities. And so that's a loss to them as well. So we're hoping that something else good will come along so that we'll keep those construction people busy and all those suppliers building that workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke? With that, we thank you so much, and we hope to see you again here, both of you, of course, on, on a brighter day. But we thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So for members of the public, if you wish to make a comment on an item not presently on our agenda, you may come forward and do so now. In the Nat U Hill, that means just simply coming forward. And for those on teams, you just raise your hand, and we will get to you.
Uh, we need a justice center that reflects our ideals, not one that keeps pace with the trends of other counties who may not aspire to the standards of justice that our community holds. Please use your platform to improve upon this proposal. I believe we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calley. Good to see you in the Nat U Hill. Other members of the public wishing to make a comment on items not on the agenda, raise your hand in Teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. I always want to say this, and I'll say it again, all members of the public, always welcome to make a comment here in the Nat U Hill or on Teams, and if that doesn't work for you, you can email any of these councilors. Uh, their addresses are on our website, so I always like to note that as well. Might be a little easier, whatever works. Plus, there's lots of events out there where folks will be at. All right, seeing no more public comment, we're going to move away from public comment into department updates. And I know the building commissioner had mentioned that he had an update. So come on forward.
Good evening, councilors. Um, uh, here tonight, um, to just to ask you to start consideration of, uh, potentially moving the building department to a 40-hour-a-week, uh, schedule. Um, we are in the process of creating the documentation and will request, um, request a, uh, formal time on the May 28th agenda to discuss this further with you here tonight to make sure that, uh, we provide you the things that we need at that time.
Anything else?
I'll introduce you all to Mr. Kirk Sylvester. This is the Deputy Building Commissioner.
Welcome.
The councilors.
Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, Mr. Sylvester.
Okay. Any questions I'm about, I'm happy to answer now. Uh, we will have more detailed information in a couple of weeks.
Sure. Councilors, did anyone have any questions at this point? Counselor Hawke.
Uh, yes, as you recall, I did ask, uh, when you came to PAC, uh, whether or not you've been paying any overtime, uh, or out what you were doing with comp time. Uh, and I believe the response was that nearly every payday that went by, your folks were really working more than their 35 hours. Uh, and so you're just keeping track of that. It, if, I'm, am I repeating that correctly?
That's correct. Um, we, we, we have not used any type of overtime, uh, when it's all handled through comp time right now. Uh, the four positions that we're talking about, uh, on average, uh, days worked without using benefit time, uh, 74% of the days, uh, that we work are over the seven-hour period. So, um, that's kind of, uh, that's for the group. There are a little bit of fluctuation within the, that staff member, but, uh, within those time.
That's part of the kind of thing we would look at as to whether or not we would want to go to 40 hours, because that's still an obligation of the county at, at some point in time, uh, to make up for those different hours. So you might want to put that down in writing to share to everybody on the council, uh, what you told us at the PAC meeting.
We can do that for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Munson.
I'm hoping that when you make a presentation to us, that you will provide, uh, an organization chart and, and a personnel, uh, map. That would be great.
Yeah, I, I think we already have that prepared.
Awesome.
Awesome.
You do.
Any other councilors? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for being with us. Good to see you. Any other departments wishing to make an update? Uh, on Teams as well, whatever works. Chief Deputy Parker, come on up. Good to have you with us.
All right, so we're not past then.
Never a fact.
You're welcome. All right, we'll, we'll be very quick, uh, just, just a couple of things. I know you like to hear about, uh, personnel updates, so, um, this, this one I'm going to tell you, yours, uh, I think was pretty startling, but I think when you hear this, uh, you can probably reach around and give yourself a pat on the back here. We, we are going through our selection process for the merit deputies. Uh, we currently have three vacancies to fill through that process, and we had a total of 40 applications come in for those positions, which historically, uh, since we got here and tried to fill positions, uh, we were normally in the 10 or less range to fill positions. Of those 40 positions, 10 of those are law enforcement officers that are already law enforcement certified. So we've attracted 10 police officers from different jurisdictions that are looking at Monroe County of making that lateral transfer over here. That is huge for us. And I, you know, I, I think it's a combination of things, but none, uh, even more than what you're about to talk about later on this agenda, is that KSAs, that is, that's, that's resonating as we're, as we're attracting these quality applicants. So just a, a quick update on that, that shows that there's, there's fruits for that labor, and it's very, very important, and we want, we're very, very appreciative of it from the, from the sheriff's side. So I think the next time we come, you know, probably July-ish, we'll probably be able to tell you that we are now fully staffed on that side of the aisle, which hasn't been the case for a long, long time. Just to note, two of those, uh, lateral positions are from out of state, one from Ohio and one from Illinois. So, you know, which they can test out and, and, and receive credit for their academies in their respective states. Um, so, uh, very, very good news on that front. On the not-so-great-news front, um, I just wanted to, this is just information only, and, and we know what we have to do, but I wanted to give you, uh, an update on our overtime, uh, budgets, and I think we talked a little bit about this going into the eclipse and how that was going to, how that was going to look. Um, so on the, on the deputy side, um, with that and, you know, some other high-profile law enforcement things that we've been involved in over the last few weeks, um, on the lit side of that, we've already, we're, we've already spent 85% of that overtime budget through lit. On the general side, we're at 63%. So what we're doing is we're, we're looking around at other councils, and we're, we're clawing that information in, and Kim's been helpful, uh, helping guide us through that. I just wanted to, to tell you that, that the situation that those two, those three events have put us in. On the jail side, it's not quite so bad. We're, uh, their unexpendee amount is 55% on, um, on the lit side. No, it's county general, I'm sorry. And, uh, we're un, unexpended at 82% on the general side in the jail. So we're, we're a little better off there, but then the, uh, the law enforcement side is, you know, looking pretty dire, and so we may be looking to come back to you later on the year. Um, really, I think, um, that Kyle's going to handle the, uh, the staffing stuff in the jail here.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Uh, as of this moment, we are still fully staffed. Uh, we had two openings, uh, two transitions. One was hired by, uh, Bloomington Police, and one, uh, transitioned to full-time on the merit side, and we slid part-time employees, fully trained, right into those full-time spots, so that worked out pretty well. Of the six transis- transition spots, we've already hired four. Um, we're still working on hiring two more. Uh, we've got, I want to say 11 at background check now, sometimes depending on the person, background checks take a little longer. Uh, ACH positions, we have hired two of the three, uh, one being reentry and one being a, uh, QMHP, uh, Quality Mental Health Professional, uh, one of the social workers essentially. Uh, so we're doing pretty well there. Um, really, and, and this kind of echoes what, what the chief deputy said, it's really easy to attract applicants when the pay's up, when the morale's up, when the communication between different offices is up, and people, uh, people are definitely taking notice because we're hearing about it, like he said, from other states. So, thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, when we talk about those four hired for the transition team, if you recall, make sure that, you know, at least the public is aware of this, I'm sure you are, but those are, those are the backfill positions that then we'll be selecting, uh, experienced officers to actually go to the transition team. So we're two away from that. We've got a meeting scheduled, uh, with Cory tomorrow. Uh, looks like that is spinning up very, very quickly, so I imagine the next time we come in, we'll have an update on the transition team itself and what that's looking like. And then, um, the remaining position there, uh, through the, through the contract with quality healthcare, is that, um, the, the position of, um, substance abuse counselor. So that's the only remaining position that, that is out there. So, uh, two of three there are, they're going to be here, probably, I'm probably about by the end of this month, on station, you know, putting their services to work. So, uh, we're really, really, really excited about that happening, and particularly the, the reentry coordinator, that was something that we've never had. We know the good work that is being done with our mental health professionals, and just going to be able to staff that up and make it more robust, but we're really interested to see how this reentry coordinator position is going to work out for us. And then for the first time, we'll have a substance abuse counselor here that I would say will probably arrive sometime, maybe mid-June is a, is an estimate. So, uh, lots of positive news coming out of the sheriff's office and, and the, and the jail on both sides, so.
Thank you. Questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Iverson.
It's so good to see you guys. It's so good to hear good news. We've worked together on this for months and months and months, and credit goes to Sheriff Marte for having a vision, and, and we're, we're working together on that vision and getting this done. So, uh, let's keep planning, let's keep working together, and let's keep making good progress in this community.
Yeah. I think the vision started in June of last year when, when the Seven Point Plan came out, and we've been chugging away at it ever since, and, you know, a credit to everybody involved, nobody let go of it. It just, it, you know, there's a lot of things that had to happen to make it happen, and, uh, you know, I, I think we all kind of pulled together and, um, from everybody that was available to throw in on that did, so we, we really appreciate it. It's going to make a difference.
We're not fast, but we're steady.
On that, Counselor Cross.
Nice. Okay. Um, I was going to say, um, I know it's been a busy time for you all for the past several weeks, um, but a congratulatory goes into order for you all because you had, um, a deputy that was recently nominated for a Valor Award. So I just wanted to say congratulations, um, to you all for the work that you are doing and to that deputy as well.
Very much. Counselor Hawke.
Uh, yes, I just want to say it's been such a joy working with the sheriff's department, uh, because you have such a vision for the future and you want it, the public to know the good things that, that you're doing, uh, here for the community. You're not just doing it for yourself, you're doing it so the community have an opportunity to feel safer and, and to know that, uh, for the people who happen to be incarcerated, they're being treated with great respect and opportunities to hopefully get a bit better. And, um, I think that's a part of the reason why it's easier to fill your slots, because you make this public. It's, it's right there on, boy, that Facebook, there's nothing you're going to hide from Facebook. And all of those pictures of how you've turned, uh, around what was going on in the jails as far as the condition, and, and how you've turned around just the attitude of people who want to serve in law enforcement. And I'm so grateful for that because there are many communities that cannot fill their slots, and it isn't just about pay. It's because they don't feel they're, uh, respected or desired or, or appreciated. And so I just want you to know that the community really loves our law enforcement, and we stand behind you, and we are going to do what it takes to support you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Tell you a real funny story about that in about 60 seconds. And, and you're exactly right, uh, Counselor Hawke. Uh, it goes back to, uh, about October of 2022, when Sheriff Ma- Marte talked to me about taking this position. I remember him laying out his vision, uh, and, and all the stuff that he wanted to accomplish, and, you know, we talked for several, several hours about it. And I remember talking to my wife, and I said, I don't know, I said, that, you know, Ruben's got a lot of stuff, and I didn't use that word, he wants to get done, and that, that's not going to be a fun job. So, uh, and then, so I called Kyle, uh, once I decided, and Kyle said, man, I don't know, that sounds like a lot of stuff, and he didn't use that word, and he was reluctant too. But the, the thing of it is, you know, when you got a guy that, that's that, um, passionate about it and is that forceful about it, and you know he's going to do it with or without you, you can't help but say, I, I want to be part of that, and that's what happened with, with Kyle and I at least. So, it just, uh, what you're saying is exactly true, that, that, that started, um, a- as he was, you know, gearing up to, to assume this office, and it's carried through, and Kyle and I were both, we're both tired because of it, so.
Thank you much. I got to keep us moving. I do want to note, you always take the calls and requests. The sheriff took one today, uh, and I always appreciate that, and I appreciate the transparency with which you do all this. Um, none of this is easy, but I, the leadership is very evident, and, and I appreciate it very much. All right. Any other departments wishing to make an update? Seeing none, I've got the auditor. Bree Gregory.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Um, I have a FEMA update that's been a long time coming. Years, actually.
Yeah.
So, um, the original request that I submitted for closeout was $725,203. Um, we finally heard back, um, and after some back and forth, um, some el- some items were deemed ineligible, and the final amount the county is going to receive is $415,597. So, I mean, although that is disappointing, it's not the full amount we, um, you know, submitted for reimbursement. There were some eligibility issues, and regardless, the county did very well. We maximized the amount of COVID funding available. We didn't leave anything on the table. We had all, we received all the CARES dollars allocated to us, and, um, FEMA was just kind of an added bonus, and the eligibility requirements are a lot more stringent. So we will be receiving that, so they say, in 35 to 60 days. So, exciting news.
Thanks for bringing that back up.
Thank you.
Any questions for the auditor? All right. Thank you so much. Seeing none. Any other departments? All right. With that, we will go to liaison updates. Councilors, any liaison updates that anyone wishes to make? Counselor Iverson.
I have two. I'll start with substance use disorder updates for those agencies in town, uh, in, in Monroe County, uh, that are interested in receiving substance use disorder settlement dollars or Monroe County Departments, uh, interested in receiving settlement, uh, substance use disorder settlement dollars, uh, on the county's website, co.munro.in.us. Under very important news, there is a link to an application for funding. Uh, the current round will go, will be taking applications until June 30th. So if you are an agency or you know of an agency that is working on substance use disorder treatment, uh, please go to that link. The second item that I'll share on substance use disorder is we ask that you save the date. Tuesday, September 5th, 2024, that's Tuesday, September 5th, 2024, we are bringing back the opioid, uh, summit. Uh, we're calling this the 2024 Monroe County Recovery Summit, uh, and we're dedicating it to the work of Greg May. It will be at the convention center. We just talked to Marquis. It's going to be a great event, uh, and we'll start getting invitations out to you all within the next couple of, uh, month or so here. Uh, more details can be, uh, uh, heard at the SUDAC meeting, Substance Use Disorder Advisory Committee meeting, which is this Friday at noon. You can, uh, either watch that on CATS or attend in person. The next, uh, update that I'll bring is from JFAC. Uh, we are scheduled to bring our next updates to council at our next meeting. So, uh, next meeting, there will be, uh, an update, and it will not involve me reading through a list as quick as I can. So that's the teaser.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Iverson.
You're welcome.
Counselor McKim.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give a brief report on the Long-Term Finance Committee meeting on April 26th. Uh, we went in detail through many recommendations that were in the Sustainability Revenue and Spending Plan from Financial Solutions Group. In particular, we were working from the version that was dated, uh, April 24th, uh, 2024. There's a lot in that report, and we all need to make sure that we're comfortable with it and get any questions answered and changes made before we start planning for the budget in earnest. Uh, I just wanted to mention a couple of highlights from the discussion. First, with respect to the general fund. First, with respect to the general fund, we find ourselves in a somewhat familiar position of having a very healthy cash balance, but also some areas of concern on the horizon. Both on the cash, on the cash balance side, if we go back to our 4B that we generated this year's budget from, we had a projected end of 2023 cash balance in the general fund of $21.7 million. So that means we formulated our budget based on an assumption that we'd have $21.7 million at the end of 2023. But when we actually, when we look at our actual end of the year cash balance, we wound up with $25.6 million, almost $4 million more than we had projected. And the majority of that appears to come from a combination of greater-than-expected reversions, that means unspent appropriations, as well as greater-than-expected interest income. But on the flip side of this really great news regarding cash balance, we still have the twin concerns of an expected reduction in interest revenue, both because of reduced rates and also because of the, because of us no longer having as much ARPA funding in the bank to earn interest on, but also the substantial reduction in income tax starting as early as 2026, depending on the results of annexation litigation. And those two hits to revenue can very quickly turn us from cash positive to cash negative. And you can, you can look at the sustainability analysis from FSG to kind of see how that plays out. Now, of course, that is just a, you know, that analysis is just based on a number of assumptions, but you can still see how that positivity suddenly can become cash negative. Secondly, we discussed the rainy day fund. Although we have a healthy rainy day fund balance of over $7 million, we have in the past used it as a match for grants, such as the Community Corrections Grant for Pavement. Our financial consultant recommends that as a matter of budgetary philosophy, we adopt a policy that calls for rainy day funds to be spent only as the very last dollars that we have available. So it is truly our rainy day savings account. That means we should look to other sources, such as the general fund for grant matches. And in fact, we'll be considering a proposal later tonight to move the existing Community Corrections Grant appropriation from rainy day to the general fund. We'll also want to see the Monroe County Code section dealing with the rainy day fund updated, both to reflect this new philosophy, but also to modify some outdated language in the code. For example, some of that dealing with COAT, which of course no longer exists. And second, with respect to our rainy day fund balance, we currently have a balance of about $7.7 million. However, our financial consultant recommends that for a budget of our size, we may want to consider increasing our rainy day balance to $10 million. I think when we receive our supplemental distribution, we ought to use that as an opportunity to build up our balance to that of $10 million. So there's a lot more that we discussed and a lot more in the report, but I encourage everybody to read the report, at least the material at the beginning. And if you're interested to watch the committee meeting, teams recording from April 26. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKim. And one thing I wanted to note to counselors to consider, and Michelle and I've talked about this, many counselors have expressed a lot of interest in long-term finance and what's going on, and those meetings are extremely helpful and informative to what we do. One thing we've floated is the possibility, and I want you all to think about it, comment on it, and pass it to Michelle, the possibility of doing a public notice that it is possible members may be there in a quorum to take that information so that you all can benefit from that. If you've said the audio, the sound, the other deliverables are not kind of hitting what you need to be informed, if you have strong thoughts on that, let Michelle know, but it may be a way that it's, you can come in on that typically Friday morning, get that information, and be on down the road with that better informed. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, it'd be nice if we could have it in this room where we could hear one another and see the presentations so that everyone could
Sure.
participate and so forth. But something I wanted to say in regards to part of the reasons, not nearly the reason, why we ended up with a larger cash balance, but we have to remember what happened to our cash balance in 2023 was a lot having to do with what happened in 2022, when we put together our budgets and the 1782s. And remember all of the budgets that are inside that frozen levy? And at the time, there was the theory, and I understand the theory, to pull everything we could from every other budget that's in every other fund in the frozen levy, pull it over in county general. That ended up with it then, so then that's what happened for 2023. That then, because they pulled all this from the other funds so that they wouldn't have so much money, it put it into the general fund. Now here is the result of what happened, and we just saw this just in the last few days. While 2023 ended up with more cash for general, it left not enough cash for the assessor's office and some of the others for the reassessment portion. Because, for instance, with reassessment, when you go back and look at what they had ended up and began the year, one year was like 700 some thousand, the next one went down to like 300 some thousand. Well, that may sound like you've got a lot of money, but remember, they're not getting income tax. So when they get that December settlement, the fall settlement, that has to carry them through until their June settlement. And because the amount that was reduced for their operating and their carry-forward balance was reduced, they ended up short being able to cover their bills. Now, there's going to be some movement of dollars, and everybody's working on it, but we have to be very reticent of that because when we think, well, we're going to move money around, and remember, we didn't do it. We didn't, I mean, we were looking at the numbers, but it wasn't our decision. But I've been assured by our new auditor that before we move forward with this and the finalized amount, when we're go working on these budgets, we will make sure we understand the result of what we're doing. And that's, that's part of my liaison report. But I also wanted to get, kind of move on to the other ones. Okay, for the treasurer, they were quite busy collecting money. Your money, folks, it is your money. I stopped by there, had a brief visit with some of the folks that were waiting to pay their taxes, really lovely people. It didn't seem to be too unhappy. Okay. And then I wanted, and then I did say a little bit about the assessor's office because that was of grave concern to them about, oh my goodness, looks, I've never been in a situation before when they were short the cash. But the other part was really talking with the sheriff's department to make sure that that we, that they knew everything we do. If we've got information, we need to make, share and make sure they are aware as we go. So those are my reports, and thank you.
You, Counselor Hawk. Counselor Munson?
Talk about Harrisburg.
Counselor Hawk just prompted me to do something different than I had planned, and I'm so glad she did because this Saturday, or Friday evening and Saturday is Harrisburg's Heritage Day Festival, and it's a good time had by all who go there. There's a parade, I think it's at 2:00.
2:00.
2:00 on Saturday. There's fireworks at 10:00 in the evening. Meanwhile, the afternoon, there's a fish fry, and the Lions Club of Kirksville is having a sale of strawberries, shortcake with real shortcakes and real strawberries. And there's a carnival for kids, music at the pavilion, a baby contest, and other great fun stuff. You can find more details on the website, and I hope to see more folks there. It's very good time.
Dynamics are going to be there.
Oh, Marty.
Dynamics, they are dynamite.
Thanks for adding that. So the other update I wish to give has to do with the Sophia Travis Grants Program. And that, the Grants Committee is meeting tomorrow to put the final approval on our schedule, but I'm going to tell you the tentative schedule because so many organizations are not-for-profits in our county and city are asking, what's going on? We have a schedule change. We will not be announcing the schedule via email this year because we ran into problems last year, and some organizations were not notified. We're going to try to do a different email approach, but the way people will be notified is that there'll be a July 19th press release, and then there will be invitations to all to attend a kickoff meeting. So save the date for July 30th for that meeting. We'll hold it here in this room. Briefly, the schedules are August 1st for applications open, September 20th, applications due, September 30th applicant presentations, again, here in this room, October 29th, award presentations will be made by the county council, and the week of December 9th, this is what everybody wants to know, the winners of the grants will receive their checks from the county to help them carry out their mission for the following year. So I look forward to seeing many people here in this room on July 30th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Munson? I think we got everyone on liaison reports that we're going to do it, so I'm going to move us on now to item number seven on the agenda, which is consent agenda items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items for May 14th. The May 2nd, 2024 Executive Session Summary Minutes of the County Council and Board of Commissioners as presented. The probation department's request of a category transfer and funds 9145-0000 JD AI program and grant of $4,100 from the supplies category to the services category. The probation department's request of a category transfer and fund 9146-9624 JD AI performance grant of $400 from the services category to the supplies category. The highways request of a category transfer and fund 1135-0000 cumulative bridge of $20,000 from the services category to the supplies category. And the highways request of a category transfer and fund 1176-0000 motor vehicle highway of $50,000 from the personnel category to the supplies category.
Second. A second. It was a tied second. No favorites here. Are there any questions from council on the consent agenda items? Seeing none. May we go, do I do public comment on this? Yeah, I absolutely do. Why would I not? If you have a comment on any of the consent agenda items, you may come forward here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz is not present, sorry. Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item eight on our agenda, which is a request from the Waste Reduction District.
Counsel, I move to approve that the council officially accepts responsibility for post-closure care on behalf of the Monroe County Waste Reduction District pursuant to Indiana Administrative Code 329 IAC 10-39-3.
Second. All right, I want to welcome Mr. Tom McGlasson, our director, the Waste Reduction District.
Yes, thank you. I have with me our landfill director, Lee Paulson. I think that, I think we've all been through this at least once before with everybody that's up there. So this is an annual demonstration that the state requires us to do on the closed Monroe County landfill, which is basically using engineering estimates to determine the remaining cost to complete the 30-year post-closure monitoring and maintenance period, of which we are in year 15. So, but the state does require somebody to say the funds are available to get through those last 15 years of the post-closure term. So the county has graciously put this demonstration up on behalf of the district for the past number of years. We're here again requesting that we could continue that for the coming year. So just would note, I don't think it's clear in what was included in your packet, but is in, I believe on page 26 of your packet, in the letter that will need to be completed by the auditor's office, you'll note that the amount for the demonstration this year is $2,346,123. That is about an $80,000 decrease from what it was last year. And again, nobody's expected to put that money up right now. And in all the years that we've done this, the district has managed to fund the costs of maintaining and monitoring that landfill through its operating budget, have not asked the county for any contributions to this point and don't foresee that, you know, coming in the future, we believe we'll be able to continue to fund that. Also, to that end, you may recall that the district does have a trust fund in place specific to landfill monitoring and maintenance costs, the current balance of which is about $750,000. We, of course, would exhaust that before ever coming to the county to ask for any assistance. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Go to questions or comments from counselors. Counselor Munson?
This is my 12th year here. And we just count on the county to take care of this backup for the solid waste district. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, we'll go to public comment. If you have a comment here in the NatU Hill, come forward to our table. If you're online and have a comment on Teams, raise your hand, and we'll call on you. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. McGlasson.
Thank you.
Good to have you with us. We now are going to move to a special item added to this agenda, and I appreciate council and the public indulging us on this. We had a communication from the Capital Improvement Board, which was a response to the city's official request regarding some of the potential land around the convention center. And a couple counselors had offered that they might have some thoughts on that. I want to give counselors an opportunity to comment. I have a few of my own, but I'm going to open it up. And Counselor Crossley, I've got you first on my list.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think we all have been paying very much close attention to everything related to the Capital Improvement Board, also known as the CIB, and the conversation. Now, I haven't really spoken much about this, and listening to everything, I think I've kind of had an Oprah aha moment and a little bit of a boiling point for me. And I really hope that our city colleagues are really paying attention, in particular, our city council colleagues, because we've all known that we've needed this convention center expansion for a really long time. We've already known that conversations have been having long before I was here on the council and some of us here, too. But the thing that intrigues me the most and gives me a little bit of a pause to this is the touch and go and the stop and go of what we are responsible for, what should be done, how big this should be, civic center conversations. And I just want to have a pause for a second. And I just kind of want to remind us what the purpose of the Capital Improvement Board is. The purpose of the Capital Improvement Board is to manage and direct the affairs of the convention center and its expansion. A capital improvement board, CIB hereby created, is to direct the affairs and to manage the affairs of the Monroe County Convention Center and its expansion. The duties of the CIB is to select the site for the expansion center and the components, including a site plan, select and contract with the operation and management organizations, oversee process for partner selection, name the expanded center, hire, retain, support oversee process for partner selection, name the expanded center, hire, retain, support staff, and the need for additional amenities, including a parking garage. Now, saying all that to say, now, I feel like I say this in every meeting, so it's no surprise to my colleagues what I would say. We all have our particular lanes in which we are driven in, and do those lanes intersect? Absolutely. But we also have C I B members that all of us, each body, have allowed, we've picked, we have appointed, and they are serving. And I would hope that we give the C I B their responsibility and their faith and knowing what they need to do, what we've asked to do. Because last year, we also saw how we had state legislators that said Monroe County needs that to come in to take care of us. I can tell you, I think the state legislators have some other things that they can be working on, but that's a whole nother conversation for another day. But in order to keep our proverbial parents away, we need to make sure that we are doing our job, standing in our lanes, allowing the C I B to do what it is that they need to do so that we can get this going. It is no surprise that we've continued to have conversations with, I talked to Talisha Koppick this afternoon. We all got emails back from April explaining how the how we have, Monroe County has not been able to have those conventions because we are just simply not big enough. And a last thing that I really want to say is with the recent conversations of what's happening with our local businesses, this convention center expansion will help tremendously. So we need not to put a pedal to the to the brake, and we need to put our pedal on the gas or our foot to the gas and continue to move forward, because what we do with this convention center expansion will help or hurt our local businesses, and we are starting to see what our restaurants are going through. Covid hit us hard. We are trying to still bounce back, but some people are having a really hard time with that. And this is not the time to have conversations of shoulda, woulda, couldas. We have the C I B, we have them here, there's a reason for that, and let's just keep going forward. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley. Incidentally, we do have a C I B member here. If you, Mr. Spoonmore, if you wanted to come forward and offer any comments that you might have, and then I'll go back to counselors. Sorry for jumping around here a little bit. We appreciate very much your service. Didn't know if you wanted to add anything to the the comments that C I B had already kind of issued.
Well, good evening, Council. Eric Spoonmore, your appointment appointment to the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers. I appreciate Ms. Crossley's remarks. We had an executive session on Monday this week, and that was, and I wanted to give you an update on what came out of that. Right now, we're at this point where we're needing to make a decision on the direction of the expansion. And so the interlocal agreement that was signed by both the city and county elected officials kind of outlined how we're going to determine that. And so we had to make a request to county government and a request to city government, asking what parcels of property would be contributed to the project. And that was, we voted on that at our April tenth Capital Improvement Board meeting. I think we got the letter out to both government units within a day or two. And thanks so much to county government, to the council and the commissioners for their very swift and speedy response to that request. So we got all of those parcels back. And then I think on May sixth, we got the response back from the, I think, the letter that you're referencing from the city that was stating what parcels were available and which ones would require reimbursement of food and beverage tax dollars. So what we learned was the parcels to the north, or what is known as the Bunker Robertson properties, were going to require a reimbursement to the effect of seven million dollars. This was the topic that was discussed at the executive session. So the topic was, do we want to go through that negotiation process and expense of food and beverage dollars to acquire that north property, which really wasn't ever a part of the original plan to begin with. It was purchased by the prior mayor oral administration in two thousand nineteen, long after the food and beverage tax was passed by the county council. So what came from that meeting was there was no desire from the Capital Improvement Board to enter into negotiations to purchase or acquire the the Bunker and Robertson property to the north. So that would be ultimately a savings of seven million dollars to the Capital Improvement Board that could be put towards the the project. Now, we just need to kind of determine, you know, what direction is it going to go? There's there's three other options. I think there's plenty of land available there. I don't want to speculate right now is what that looks like, but there's an eastward option, there's a westward option, and a southward option that we're kind of examining right now, and pros and cons to all of that. President John Whiteheart of the Capital Improvement Board has asked for a vote to be taken on that direction of the expansion at our next meeting in June. So we've got kind of a tight timeline to get all that sorted out, but we do hope to have that determined by the June. I think it's June twelfth meeting is when we'll we'll have that on our agenda. So that's just kind of an update on some new developments that came from the executive session the other day, and just wanted you all to be aware of that. And in formal notes, I think you got, at least some of you were on the email from our attorney, Jim Whitlatch, to City Legal informing them of our decision to not pursue that. And the nice thing about that is it gives the city the opportunity to make some pretty quick decisions on what they want to do and how they want to dispose of that property if they want to. But it won't be the Capital Improvement Board that's that's pursuing it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spoonmore. It's always good to have you back here with us. Counselors, Counselor Hawk.
I just want to say that we are so grateful, this community is, that we have citizens who have said they want to serve on this Capital Improvement Board. We are so fortunate because the expertise there in the group that's come together is they're stellar. And it's a we must know that they have the heart of this community and the and the best. They want the best for this community, and they also have pledged that they're going to be keeping a watchful eye on the dollars and and what this is going to cost and so forth. So I appreciate all that you're doing and the fact that you're keeping this council apprised of what's going on, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Counselor McKim.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do want to echo both Counselor Hawk and Counselor Crossley's comments. I particularly appreciate Counselor Crossley's comments on the role of the C I B. I think she said it very passionately and far better than than I could. I do also just just kind of want to call attention to a comment that Mr. Spoonmore made, which was that the the north option, the bunker property, was never part of the initial concept for convention center expansion. The former mayor made that purchase without or or I, you know, directed that purchase or essentially made that purchase without the involvement or notice or discussion with any of the stakeholders of the of the convention center. We it was never planned to go to go north. We will do just fine with the other three options. I have my own personal preferences, but I leave it in the capable hands of the C I B to to make that decision. But the, in particular, I completely respect the position of the current mayor and the current city council that they are not interested in donating that property. I fully support that that decision, and I also fully support any decision to not use food and beverage tax to pay for that, pay for that property. I think we have other options that have already been acquired for the purpose of convention center expansion. I think the the city, the the new administration has has priorities, and I encourage her to to continue to pursue those priorities. So thank you very much for your work, Mr. Spoonmore. And yes, I encourage the C I B to not recommend food and beverage tax be be spent on on the bunker property.
Thank you. Counselor Munson.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Spoonmore, and I hope I hope the C I B will continue to give us updates. I started in, I think it was about twenty sixteen, to work with various people on the concept of an expansion for the convention center. And our first agreement about moving forward with this was, how do we organize this? Who's going to actually handle the the decision making, et cetera, et cetera? And we didn't know a structure, but we did our research, and we identified that it was a capital improvement board. And hence, here you are. I think the 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 board for their decision to move ahead without spending food and beverage tax revenue for the north property because that would be a significant impact on your budget for the actual expansion construction. So thanks to all of you for your hard work.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson.
I had two things to say that I don't think will repeat what my colleagues have said, and the first thing is I appreciate the timeline. The thing I've heard from the community was, we need to get this done. We are, we're losing business, we're losing visitors. Tourism is an important, important industry to our community, so I appreciate the ambitious timeline. The second thing that I want to raise is I appreciate the leadership of this council. We have been kept in the loop. We have been made known about all the developments. So, Mr. Deckard, Ms. Crossley, thank you so much for your leadership on this issue and for making sure that the council is aware of all the developments as they happen.
Thank you very much. I'll make some final comments here, and then we will let Mr. Spoonmore get back to working on that convention center. I was having a conversation with Chancellor Whiteheart on Monday, and I want to add to the comments, we have a stellar C I B. I don't know how we condom recruited them all to do it, but they're awesome. And every one of these bodies is represented with representatives on there, including, I mean, we're looking literally at our representative, who incidentally was former president of this council and had to sit in this very chair. We've got that covered, and as I was listening to Chancellor Whiteheart talk about kind of here's, you know, what we're thinking and some potential steps, I thought this is doing precisely what it was designed to do. They are moving quickly because Indianapolis, the legislature is watching very, very closely. And there's good days on there up there, and there's sometimes not good days up there when they look at us. Sometimes they dislike Lisa Ridge, and sometimes they like a few more of us. I want to keep that process moving and happy. What's more, I want to do it because the jobs that Counselor Crossley was talking about are important. And again, this is the second time jobs have come up in this meeting. We can never be a community that forgets about jobs. And as a waiter that was working in downtown Indianapolis, living on convention traffic that came through the western and stayed ate at Shula's where I was a waiter, I fought off many and eviction and many other bad things through my convention traffic. Now, I'm not saying everything that's going to come through there is that, but we have a good headache here in that people want to be in this community either to live or to visit. And we got to hug that every chance we get. This convention center is a chance to do it. So I do respect where the the city's coming from on this. This just doesn't sound like it's the avenue for that. So again, thanks to the C I B. Ms. Turner King has got a comment.
Yes, in the spirit of keeping the council in the loop, I did want to mention, and it seems like a good time now since we're talking about the C I B, that last Thursday, I attended a special session of the city council. And after an hour discussion, the city council decided that they will be drafting a letter to the C I B that outlines some city direction that, which will include city direction, but they also mentioned that they will be providing a copy of the letter to the other governing bodies, so the county council and the county commissioners for input on things that are not under city code. So not so much how tall the building can be, but what is the vision for a civic center? So I wanted to put that on your radar because that should be forthcoming.
Thank you, Ms. Turner King, and thanks for going to those meetings.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Turner King, for for making that point, and we're looking forward to receiving that missive from the city council. And we'll we'll coordinate on, you know, as much of that as we possibly can. But really, I just want to say thanks to each of you. You've you have all been extraordinary partners. The county commissioners have been extraordinary partners. Really, all elected officials have been just just great to work with on this project. I know things don't move as quickly as we would like them to sometimes. But I got to tell you, I think that we have achieved more progress on this project than we have seen in years and years. And so let's keep the momentum going. There's a lot of moving parts to this with all the various elected units and folks involved. But let me know how I can help going forward. I do plan to, you know, come back and get more regular updates on these items as well, too. But if you guys ever need anything, just let me know. Happy to help in any way.
Thank you so much. Good to have you here. All right, counselors, thanks for having that special item. We're going to move on to item number nine. This is a request from the probation office.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for an additional appropriation and fund one thousand dash zero two two six general fund probation of seven thousand, six hundred and eighty one dollars in the personnel category.
Second. Thank you. We want to welcome Ms. Linda Brady. Thanks for waiting through all of our stuff.
No problem. Thank you, Linda Brady, Chief Probation Officer. I did want to thank you all for the consent agenda, the whoever came up with that idea. Brilliant, and we department heads love it because it's not wasting time to talk about things that are, don't need a lot of talking. So thank you for that. I was before you a couple of weeks ago and asked for a salary ordinance change for, to be able to pay Troy Hatfield, my former deputy chief probation officer, at an hourly rate. And I told you I'd be back for an appropriation, and here I am. Our request is to be able to continue to contract, not contract, that Troy would stay on part time for up to a hundred sixty hours max between now and the end of the year to help train Anthony Williams, who is the new deputy chief probation officer, as well as to help train Melissa, our office administrator, about how we deal with the claims process now. We have twenty three different budgets that we have, when a claim comes in, Melissa's got to figure out from all the budgets, where does a claim go? It used to be Troy would just tell her, and we're finding a lot of things. Troy just did a lot of things he just took on, which was wonderful that he did that. But we've got to spread that knowledge out so that we can all learn how to do that. And so this is a request to be able to retain him between now and the end of the year for no more than a hundred and sixty hours. So any other questions?
Yeah, counselors, what questions do you have?
If I be, I did get a phone call from Judge Decoff this afternoon, who apologized for not being able to be here tonight due to a prior commitment, but she did want me to advise the council that she is in support of this request, and that would be very beneficial for the probation department.
Thank you very much, Ms. Turner King.
Thank you.
Always appreciate hearing from Judge Decoff. Counselors, anything else? Jeff, Counselor McKim.
I guess I will just say that I think we should do anything we can to take advantage of any hours that that Mr. Hatfield is willing to give us before completely transitioning to his new job. So I'm certainly in support of this.
Thank you.
I'd add to that and say you all wrote the textbook on half this stuff, and I know that we we need to capture as much of that from all of you that we can for the good of the the folks in this community. All right, we'll go to public comment. If you have public comments, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams, and we'll recognize you. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thanks for the feedback on the the consent agenda. We're always looking for that. We'll go to item number ten. This is a request from the Jail Correctional Center, and I know that the sheriff, Sheriff Marte is here, Chief Deputy Parker and staff.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval to amend the twenty twenty four salary ordinance, adding two additional corrections officers, account lines, one zero six nine seven. adding two additional corrections officers, account lines 10697 and 10698, and fund 1,000 dash 0380, general fund jail, and in fund 1170 dash 0380, public safety lit jail.
Second.
Thank you very much. We want to welcome Sheriff Marte and Chief Deputy Parker back to the council room. Thank you for coming in to talk to us about this. Sheriff, I'll turn it to you.
Good evening, counsel. This pretty much is straightforward. So pretty much we're here just to answer your questions of any, any of us. And, but I think straightforward for us.
Right. Councilors, I will go to you next for any questions or comments regarding the request. Counselor Hawke.
Yes. Get my glasses. I'll make sure I'm talking about the right one. This is, we're trying to decide which fund it should come from. That's part of what this discussion is about, right?
Yes, and there is a, there is a, the motion offered a sample based on what staff had looked at for available funds. So she can comment on that and it's open for variation as well.
Oh, well, you have a copy of the script, which I don't have.
Yeah.
Regardless, I'll just share my opinion.
Sure.
Because we know that the point of this is that you might be moving people around. I think that we should take this out of the general fund. We know that we have a heavy cash balance in the general, which will give us until budget time when we're planning next year to review the other funds to see where we are. Now, I don't know what the other suggestion was, but since I think I have the best suggestion, I hope that's what we're going to do. Is that what the suggestion was?
The suggestion under the motion read by Counselor Crossley was two of these positions under general fund and two under public safety. But again, it's open for discussion amendment by counsel. I see Counselor McKim has his hand raised if you want to yield on to him.
Oh, actually, okay. So part of, part of this was trying to make sure I heard correctly because it was different from what was on the agenda. I guess my inclination would be to support taking, taking all three, all four out of the general fund just because there is such a higher, high cash balance, and I think there's more flexibility there. Is, does anybody really object to that? Is there any reason why any of you object to just putting all four in the general fund?
I've heard two councilors say it, and I'll take that as potentially a friendly amendment to Counselor Crossley's original. Did you, you want to offer that, Counselor Hawke?
Did he just make the motion? I'll second it.
He, he's, he agrees with your sentiment, so.
So why don't you, why don't you make the motion? I'll second it.
You are made to make the motion. I, I move that we place all of these positions in the general fund, at least for this year.
Second.
Got a motion?
That's a motion. Do I have second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Discussion on the amendment. Counselor Munson.
Let's get her done.
Counselor Munson summed it up. Anyone else? Talk on your amendment.
The other thing is that what could happen is because the plan was that, you know, they might have to move around some hours or whatever. Well, you don't want to have payroll, trying to figure out how many hours in one fund, how many, each payroll could be different. It's just, I don't know why we wouldn't just try to keep them all in the same fund.
All right, so we've got this amendment. Let's go ahead and take a voice, can I voice vote?
No.
No, because we got a remote. All right, let's do a roll call on the amendment.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Amendment passed six to zero.
All right, amendment's been agreed to. The underlying request here, comments on that, councilors? I just, I want to offer, I appreciate very much the sheriff, as I said in earlier comments, sheriff coming in whenever we've asked him to come in on various things and being very transparent, talking to us about this. He always takes my calls and I always appreciate that. And not only that, I do want to add this. I have personally witnessed as the sheriff takes calls from anybody in this county. Doesn't mean if, if you're in office, out of office, and handles that. And people always comment to me, wow, that's awesome. And I, 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 look, we had, we have some things here and we're moving to, 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 to get into some things to address all, all manner of things that need to be addressed. So I appreciate that very much. Other comments from council? All right, seeing none, we will go to a final roll call vote on the underlying motion. Oh, pardon me, I'm going to stop right there. Comments from the public? If you have a comment, come forward in the Nat U Hill or simply raise your hand on teams.
I think.
Mr. Askins, do you have a comment? Come on up here. We'll make room. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dave Vaskins with B Square Bulletin. You covered, I think, pretty well the source of the funding for the positions. What I'm not quite clear on is why the positions are being added. And I don't know what to write for B Square readers as to the answer to that question. And it's quite possible that I've missed it because I've been trying to focus on the enhanced semiconductor news that broke. So apologies if that's in the packet or if it was a part of the discussion that I missed. But I would appreciate it if that could maybe be reiterated with a sentence or two.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
I, I'd be happy to offer that on behalf of the councilors.
Yes, I think it's very important that the sheriff or whomever make it clear that a couple of these are for transports and the number of transports that has happened. And, and so that's an important situation. And yes, I think the public needs to hear about the need for the transport.
Let me, let me offer the following, and I think this will address what Mr. Askins is, is seeking here. On 5-224, council and board of commissioners had an executive session to discuss security system needs. And based on information received during that session, the department from the sheriff has requested the creation of the account lines that are in the underlying motion and a budget determined by council to, and as well as amendments to salary ordinance to respond to those security needs that have been identified in that discussion. I think that probably addresses that. You're very welcome, and thank you, Mr. Askins, for covering us. All right, we will now go, I did public, any other public comment, I should say.
You didn't discuss the transport.
We will now go to, seeing no public comment, a roll call on the underlying motion.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yeah.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Hey, we have also item D from the sheriff.
That is, sorry, I lost in sauce. Um, counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request to amend the corrections officer job description to incorporate security needs and to update the age requirement. These amendments do not require a classification review.
Second.
Second. And sheriff, we have the job descriptions, I believe, that have been sent to you by our folks. And any comments you wish to make on any of that?
No, we really appreciate the assistance that has been provided to us. Kim's been very helpful with that. So I, I, I really appreciate the assistance that was provided to us. So they made it easier for us to really move forward. So thank you, sir.
Okay, questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I'll go to questions, comments, or comments from the public. Those in the public, raise, come forward in Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, on this motion to amend these job descriptions as, as has been identified, let's go ahead and go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard. Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much, Sheriff and Chief Deputy Parker. We appreciate very much you coming in and making lots of time for all this.
And thank you for making it very smooth for us as well.
Thank you, sir. Takes us to item 11 on the agenda and the highway department.
Counsel, I move to approve the highways request of a fund to fund transfer of cash from fund 1169 dash 0000, local road and street in the amount of $350,000 to fund 8161 dash 0000, sample road phase one.
Welcome, Ms. Lisa Rich. Good to have you back. Mr. Turner, good to have you as well. Turn it to you.
So our sample road is a federal aid project. The project has been completed. However, we still have some ongoing change orders that's under discussion. So, but we have to bring our cash balance to zero in our grant funds. That project is funded from the local road and street fund. So this is the first of a transfer from cash to cash, and there most likely will be more. So that's why I've kind of built up the local road and street cash balance to be able to transfer over and pay for these projects.
Any comments or questions from council?
I just appreciate every time I see that truck out there cleaning, getting the road ready for some of the paving that you're working on, that you did some prep work before you started filling all those major potholes that we're falling into. I appreciate the highway department. We rely on that highway department every day and don't even recognize it. We just assume you're going to be there to fix it. So, and I know that you're spending a lot of your hours trying to make sure that you've got the money to move around, to grab whatever you can, and try to get these roads in the best position it can be for the people of this county.
And as noted earlier, your success rate at going to Indianapolis and bringing dollars home is huge. And it's so appreciated, and we're glad those dollars are here. So thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Let's go to comments from the public. If you have a comment in the public, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
That takes us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the highways, highway department's request for a new account line, 37411, construction and fund 9174 dash 0000, Lake and River Enhancement Pro, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $27,650 in the services category.
Second.
I, I think this is kind of fun.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Rich.
So our, actually, our MS4 coordinator submitted this to D N R. It's also known as a layer grant. The application was awarded 25,000 towards the $32,200 project cost, which is approximately 77% of the cost of the project. The county portion out of stormwater would be $2,650. Remainder to be paid is $4,550. If the Soil and Water Conservation District approves to provide the property owner assistance for this, that'll be up to their board. Otherwise, it'll be up to the property owner to, for the one project. The other one is a county-owned project.
Cool. I have a question, but questions or comments from council? When, when the public sees cleaning up log jams, that means cleaning up things that create floods. Is that?
Correct. When you have the backup, then it creates backup flooding, of course.
Yeah, that's one thing that I have been talking a lot about folks. And one thing, doesn't matter who you are in this county, people get that term flooding because we're literally right here in this room, sitting in the middle of the town in what's a giant cereal bowl, and it floods. We know that. There's a big dig that's going on that our city folks are doing. But anywhere in this county, we get flooding because of our soil, anything. So when I see stuff like that, this, I love to see that because floods are devastating and they affect literally everybody in this community. So thank you. Any other questions, comments?
About the log jam, and I don't know whether, what you did to help there in Forest Park, that might be part of what you've already been working on. But across the street from me is one of the major drainage ways, but that whole entire area. And it doesn't take much for trees to, you know, get right down in there. And it just backs up that huge, huge covert. And of course, I get the benefit of that. I am losing my mailbox post because of it. But I appreciate the fact that you folks will come and do what you can to try to get that water moving where it's supposed to go. So unless you're in one of the lower areas, you might not appreciate that so much. You know, some of the other counties who do not want to support some of our issues having to do with stormwater and how the dollars should be used, that's because they're, you know, northern counties where they're flat and they don't have this kind of problem. We have the beauty of hills and dales, and we also have the problem of hills and dales.
Counsel Iverson.
It is my understanding that a stormwater ordinance update is coming later in June. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, so it was actually, it was on the agenda this morning for the drainage board. We had a drainage board and stormwater board joint meeting this morning. It'd also be, it's on the agenda for tomorrow, stormwater regular meeting. And it is tentatively set to be passed June 5th at the commissioners' meeting. We have a deadline, I believe it's July 1st. This results, and it needed updated due to the I D M change of changing the rule five to the general permit. So this is to get Monroe County in compliance with that. There'll be some changes, the way the, you know, the property owners go through the permitting process, their building, planning. And now will involve stormwater fee for review. And so, yeah, it'll take us a little bit to implement everything, get it going. But it is scheduled for June 5th for, to be presented to the commissioners. I believe the week before that, it'll be on the work session to go over the plan and then bring it to a regular session.
So if you're interested in hills and dales and soup bowls, pay attention to this ordinance.
And if flooding is just huge, and everybody in this county talks about it.
Yep.
All right, let's go to public comment, correct? Public comment on this item, you can come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand in teams. Come on forward. If you want to maybe jump in one of these, welcome.
Wanted to acknowledge on behalf of the Monroe County Soil and Water Conservation, Conservation District Board that we did approve that the funds be allocated for the support of that layer project.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Thank you, Kim. Whitney Schlegel.
Schlegel. We appreciate it. Right, any other comments from the public? Raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard. Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request for a fund to fund transfer of cash fund 1197 dash 0000, stormwater management in the amount of $2,650 to fund 9174 dash 0000, Lake and River Enhancement Pro.
Need a second.
Second.
All right, and Ms. Rich, back to you.
This is the cash to transfer into the grant for our match.
Any comments, questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. Come forward here in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. Come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hock.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. That takes us to item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation in the amount of $400,000 in Fund 1176-0000, Motor Vehicle Highway.
Second.
Scott, a second. Ms. Rich.
This is additional funds to put into our paving line. We've got another outside of the Community Crossing Grant that you provide the match for. This is for our other list that we bid out. It is currently out to bid. And I believe we opened those on May 22nd to try and get those awarded and get those completed in 2024 also.
Questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Iverson.
How many miles are we going to do this year?
Right now, if we can make it all work, it's around 46 to 50 miles again.
Hey.
And that's a huge dollar amount, but we're, we're trying to do that again this year. Is that correct? 46, 50?
Lot.
About 46 miles.
I meant to ask you this a long time ago when this kind of came up. Do you think historically you're doing more than anyone's done?
Yes, I think so. Yes.
And this will be second.
Absolutely. The crews out there are work nonstop. We do it a different method. I'm not trying to put any previous management down or for their process. We just do it a little bit differently of addressing the drainage, getting the roads ready, doing the ditching work. That's why we have three gradals at this point. And then that just helps for the longevity. We moved into preventive maintenance of crack sealing the roads. That's another avenue to help prevent it. We've moved into adding shoulder stone after we pave a road. So we just do things, hopefully, a lot, a little bit more advanced to today's technology to help the roads with longevity. We, we can never satisfy all the needs that are out there. And we still have a lot of roads that need a lot of attention, but we can just only do so much, and that's what we do.
And again, the dollars that you go after and you get are massive in all this. The taxpayers of this county could not and would not be able to do this on their own. So, thank you.
I couldn't do it on my own without everybody in the Highway Department, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. It's awesome. All right. Any other comments, questions from counsel? Let's go to public comment on the item. Come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hock.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And that takes us to item E. Counselors, I do want to note before Ms. Crossley reads this motion that after G, I'm going to give a seven-minute stretch just for folks, and then we'll come back together. All right.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation in the amount of $500,000 in Fund 1169-0000, Local Road and Street.
Second.
Ms. Rich.
This is just to help with paving again. So it's just taking money from our cash and putting it into our bytiminist line.
Okay. Questions, comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll go to comments, question, or comments from the public. If you have any, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hock. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. That's item F next.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for the deappropriation of account line 23400, Batuman, Batuman, uh, by two minutes, da-da-da, by two minutes, in the amount of $1,500,000 in Fund 1186-0000, Rainy Day.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Rich.
I believe this originated at your FSG Finance Committee, and it was recommended to move this from the rainy day into the general fund. And I believe that's the steps to deappropriate that, and then item F or G is to put it into the general fund.
And so money management here. Any other comments or questions from counselors on that? Counselor McKim.
Only that this is, this ties back to the report that I've given from the Long Range, or Long Term Finance Committee, that this is, reflects a philosophy of use of the rainy day really as a, as the last dollar savings account.
And to be clear, we are not turning our back on paving on this. Counselor Hock.
I would just like to note that no matter what fund this comes out of, wherever we take it, this council wants to support you to make sure that you get the matching dollars that you need to get as many miles paved as we possibly can get. It would be crazy of us to turn our backs on, on this, these dollars coming from the state, and we don't know how long that program is going to go on. So kudos to you and your team for making sure we got every bit of it that we can get. Thank you.
We appreciate you providing the match. As you can see from the dollars that we try and pull from the other resources, we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we do today. I know it's the MVH calculations, I believe, at the State House is all going to change next year. Not sure how that's going to affect everything. Not sure how long the Community Crossings Grant will, will stay in place. Next year could be a whole new picture for the MVH fund. It's just an unknown for everybody.
Yes, Counsel Iverson.
To that point, we were just made aware, I think, today or this week about the summer study committees and the legislature. That's something to keep our eye on.
Absolutely. Yeah, if it goes down, that's, I'm not sure how they're going to change the calculation. It has, to my knowledge, it has not been changed since I've been here. So.
I, I just add this, this, the program, and again, you going after those dollars, and Indianapolis smiling fortunately upon us in, in that process is just absolutely huge. I personally believe this program has made more bipartisan goodwill where it's needed, and people don't care about partisan or bipartisan. They just want things paved. And I've got more comments from people on the work in the last couple of years or so particularly, and they notice it and they see it. So my heavens, I hope this doesn't change. But I don't know how long you can stay as lucky as you have been in, in pulling this off and doing the hard work. So, thank you. Any other comments, questions from counsel? We'll throw it to the public. Any comments or questions on this item? Come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hock.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And now we have the matching G.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for, for a new account line, 23402, by two minutes CC grant, in Fund 1,000-0530, General Fund Highway, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $1,500,000, $1,500,000 in the supplies category.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Rich. You're like, this is the sequel to the last movie, right?
Very well, self-explanatory.
Got it.
I, I would like to just state that this is general fund. General fund is a multi-user. And so the Highway Department has been given their own location for general fund. So that's why there is an extension of 0530.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from counsel? Counselor?
Yes, that, for years and years, we were told, and I, maybe we just believed it because people told us that, and we didn't really go look at the legislation. That was back when we did that kind of thing. Just, we just believed what anybody told us. But we were told we weren't allowed to use general fund money for uses for the highway. And so maybe this is the way everyone does it, simply because so much of the general fund money is income tax money. And we know some counties use almost all of their income tax revenue, oh, you know, like where Carmel is, for the roads and streets and so forth. So I'm sure that changed, that legislation changed along the way. Or maybe that was just what we were convinced of back then. But however it works, as soon as we get your money.
We wait long enough, we may see it change again. Any other? That's Ms. Rich is smiling. That's the key. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, let's go to the public one last time on these items for Highway. If you have comments, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yep.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hock.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
We are going to take, thank you, Ms. Rich. Thank you, Mr. Turner. We appreciate you being here.
I don't have a copy of your script, so I don't have anything going on.
So the next item would have been the ARPA, but we did table that because there's no pending item. What I'm going to do is give counselors a seven-minute stretch. That means it's 5, 6:56. We're going to come back together at 7:03 to move through the remaining items, which were substantial enough that I, I need to break you just at this point. So we'll come back at 7:03 and go from there. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.[108.99]
Here's, here's the group that wants some adjustments. And we're going into budget hearings and these are the ones we can do and maybe we can't do them all. Now, that's the reason why I thought the fiscal body should be aware of where we were. However, it appears the, the report I asked for is not available. And so if you folks, or, or what you could say is, we want to move forward, send it off to WIS. We've not said we're going to do it. We'll just send it off to WIS and see what, how it comes out and then make the financial decision later. You folks do whatever you want. I just thought it was a responsible thing to do for the fiscal body to be able to weigh in before we start spending money at WIS with the new position.
I'll open this up to other counselors to comment. Counselor Munson, did you want to add something?
I have a question. I thought in our budget discussions last year that we dealt with this position. And
No, we didn't.
Did we include it in our budget?
I'm going to take this as an inquiry.
Counselor Hawke and I are having a disagreement. So we need to understand this because her concerns are very valid if we didn't do it. And if we did it, then her concerns are, have been met.
I, I, I want to answer this just for the public watching this. We did include this position in our budget. We have been waiting for this to go through PAC. We did include it in the budget. I've received confirmation of that from the commissioner's administrator that it was included in their budget for a fact. One thing I'll also add to, one thing I'll also add to this being included in the budget is I think it would be bad for us not to say that we, that the commissioners, as well as the administrator, gave a green light to get this into PAC. Had that not happened, we wouldn't be having this and several counselors at the microphone very strenuously over the years, including Counselor Wilts, who is not with us, but would want to say that have made the case for this position. So this is not new today. And it was so not new that we did budget it in the last budget. I see Counselor McKim's hand raised.
Okay, thank you. And actually, this, I'm just following up with Counselor Munson's question. So just to confirm, and I guess this would be really a council office question. This position is currently funded in the 2024 budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. But actually, oh.
I, I was, I think, I'll look it up really quick. I'm not sure if it was budgeted at the minimum or if it was budgeted at the three-year. And yes, it went through the whole budget process and you guys agreed to it at that time.
We talked about.
Because I believe it was under, because when we did it in, that was like in September, October, that the idea was to have the job descriptions done and ready at the first of the year and we kind of hit a stalemate. And so we're still, you know, so we're still working on the job description process. But the idea was to have this ready to go.
Okay, so my, I had a question. I had asked this question at, at PAC and I want to ask it again. The current grant is actually funded to the end of this calendar year. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's the information we heard at PAC yesterday. However, Martha Miller, you saying yes? Martha Miller's saying yes. You want to come to the microphone?
Mr. President, why were we not all informed of this?
Hold on, I, I think, I think I have the floor here.
Yeah, Counsel Irvinson's got a question to Ms. Miller.
Ms., thank you for being here.
Martha Miller, Monroe County Soil and Water Conservation District Manager. And I hate to say this, but could you ask your question again?
Yes, the, the question that we want to know is the grant funding for this position. Does it conclude at the end of this calendar year?
December 31st, 2024 is the last day we will be able to do anything with this money. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you for your answer.
Okay, so, so thank you. That's, I guess what I'm saying is we're actually already a year ahead on, on the funding for this position. If we've already appropriated money for this year, but yet we don't actually need it. All that money is going to revert. And so we're essentially already a year ahead in terms of, of funding for this position.
One quick thing in addition to that. In January, three years ago, when we knew we were getting this money, we came to council. So you guys could prepare and we were told at that point by various council members that we had three years to address it and we would address it.
And I, I would like to let everybody know that it was budgeted at a minimum at a Patsy level. So, and that was because we didn't really know what was going, you know, where it was going to land.
But all of that will then revert.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I definitely support moving forward on this.
I just think it's, I am, okay, I don't even know how to address this. Why did, what's been going on that this was added in, in this year's budget? And yet, why, why? This is really backwards. And why have we had to be spending so much time talking about the budgeting process and whether or not there was fiscal, what was already done? Why didn't somebody tell us? It was in there, believe me. I don't think you already knew it was in the budget. And evidently someone has figured out it was already in the budget. Why didn't somebody say so at PAC meeting? I mean, that, I really am pretty, pretty upset about this because I've spent a lot of time trying to research this and trying to figure out what's a fair thing to do and look at the budgets overall. And then you wait until this meeting. It's like, oh.
Yeah, Counselor Hawke, I appreciate your comments. I'll just say that I believe this discussion in the budget last year was pretty well discussed and narrated. And I'll say because I formally, I'm one of, I think, three who have served as liaisons to this department. This one has been talked about since I had less silver on the sides of my head. And I, I don't mean to be facetious on that, but I believe some of that silver came because of discussions on this item. This has been discussed. My concern, look, we do have some money management to figure out when grant ends, when we start paying and all that. But my concern is that if any department would ever make a request and have something held for three years while other departments come in and get things much quicker, some within this year. And so I want to make sure that this department is not being put through different paces than what is fair to the average bear. And we have before us two elected supervisors under a system we partner with the state on. So I just want to note all of that is, it's incumbent. So I'm grateful that this is even here today like this. But I think we budgeted with the thought it'd be a little bit quicker in how it did, but neither here nor there, we're here. Other comments or questions from council on this item? Counselor Iverson?
All right. So I'm going to take this in a little bit of a different direction.
Okay.
To me, this job description is about conservation, protecting forests, supporting small farmers, restorative agriculture. But I like to think, and I mentioned this yesterday in PAC, about climate change as a, as a pie. And I'm hungry, so I'm going to talk about pie. A pie cut in four pieces. Conservation is one of those slices. The second slice is resiliency. We just had the commissioners celebrate Earth Day with a proclamation celebrating the first ever climate resilience plan of a county in all of Indiana's history. That's the second slice of the pie. The third slice of the pie is a climate resilience, or excuse me, a climate action plan. And the fourth slice of a pie is a greenhouse gas inventory. I think if we're going to send this to WIS, then we need to send the job description to an expanded set of stakeholders that understand the whole pie. Because if we're going to be spending finite resources on a job, or we've already appropriated the jobs, it's going to be reverted, we need to be investing in the whole pie. Conservation, yes. Resiliency, yes. Greenhouse gas inventory, yes. Climate action. Right now, we do not have a staff person doing this work. We're putting the work on other staff people. And the last point I'll make is that the advice we're getting from climate partners is that we are leaving grants on the table because we don't have someone to apply for grants. Applying for grants is in this job description. So we know that this position can apply for grants. And it would be well, uh, my advice to this council is to broaden the scope of this job description to account for the whole pie.
All right. And if we want to offer any friendly amendment formally, I mean, we could take that into what we consider here. Counselor Iverson, do you want to word it a certain way or you want to think on that?
I, I think that moving forward with an amendment to this motion is not in the, kind of the, the nature of what I was recommending. I think it was more in terms of looking at the job description and its wording that staff would take on that work to broaden it out a little bit more.
So maybe hold this and get that then sent to WIS.
That would be, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, okay. All right. Other questions or comments from council? Counselor Munson?
This job description has gone through a lot. And I hope we can, can set up a schedule to have people give their input on expanding it for the, the purposes you're recommending, Counselor Iverson. I just would like to see this not drug out further and further because this, this is difficult. We also have a very capable person that we don't want to leave on a hook either. So do you have a suggestion about some sort of timeline for us?
I think we could get the necessary parties together within a week or two.
Okay.
So maybe if we held this until next meeting, we could satisfy that.
Could we table this then? Would that be the appropriate thing to do?
Okay.
Okay, I move, I move we table this agenda item until our February 28th meeting. May, I forgot, I forgot about several months, didn't I?
You're doing better than me. So May 28th.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion on the amendment that's on this motion. Oh, Counselor McKim, or do you all have any comments you'd like to make?
Counselor Iverson, I, I think it's a matter of language in that description. Because in fact, both the mission of the Soil and Water Conservation District is central to, and works with climate change and, and the areas that you discuss. And in our principal partner in the, on the federal side of National Natural Resources and Conservation Service, USDA, there's mandates and plans that have come from there that we follow those practices when we work with landowners. So I, I think it's just a matter of the language.
I do, I do too. I, I don't think there's going to be a radical reworking here.
It's not mission.
We actually do go after those grants and we have our watershed grants, our Sentinel Landscape Partners, our partners with Friends of Lake Monroe. I mean, all of the different partners that we work with, which are listed in that position are all working together to address the, you know, the, the overall climate change, issues of climate change. So I, I think it might just be a matter of language. And having written and rewritten that job description many times, it is, it was challenging to work within the language parameters that were given for the description. So I, I'm sure it can be easily addressed.
I think so too. And I, I'm in agreement with you that, that it's probably an issue of language much more than starting from scratch, which I don't want to do either.
No.
I appreciate all that. Yeah.
So I've looked at several iterations of the job description. And I really think it is a matter of tweaking, not rewriting, just to satisfy the concerns of, of people in the county that, that want, want to see the grant writing be specified.
We've got this motion. Thank you, Counsel Munson. We've got a motion now to, to hold this until the 28th. On May 28th, I'm going to take us to a roll call vote on that if there's no other comments on that. Our counselor, or counsel, Ms. Turner King, do I need public comment on the tabling motion? Okay, thank you. All right. So let's do a roll call vote on the motion to table until the 28th.
Counselor McKim?
No.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed majority five, four to one.
Okay, all right. So we will work on any feedback or input there. We appreciate openness to that and patience in this process. And we'll come back to this on the 28th. Okay? Thank you for waiting patiently through all of this for a three-year process. So we will keep moving on this. We're, we're getting closer. All right.
In touch with speed. I said I'll be in touch with speed.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to item 13 on our agenda, which is a report or a presentation of the 2022, 2023 Annual Report from our own Counselor Munson for the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission.
Oh, the whole room has emptied out. This is not important for you to hear directly from me. Although I should tell you that Counselor Hawke gave her, her family background for her council work and Counselor Decker did. So now I'm going to tell you that my family, I grew up in the restaurant business. And I was, my first job was folding napkins when I was four. Okay. The Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission met April 26th. And this includes representatives of, of county government and city government and entertainment and dining establishments in our city and county. And we approved the annual report that is going to be published on the county council website so that everybody can see this. That's the important thing. We're, yes, it is a requirement of our ordinance, but it is really, I think, a commitment by us to report to the public about the good things that have been done with the taxes that they have paid while dining and drinking. So do you, and when you see the report, if you have questions, please, please bring them up. But it's, it's, it's a sort of boring technical report, but I think you could see what, how the money was spent and that's the point. That's it.
Thank you very much, Counselor Munson. And we appreciate very much your service on that. All right. Yeah, Counsel Irvinson?
Just real quick, there's a figure one in your report shows the historical revenue from, and it just up and to the right.
Yes, and that, that is good despite COVID.
Despite COVID, yeah.
Despite COVID. There was a dip down for COVID, but we came back up and kept going up.
Yep, we have a strong economy.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 14, which was tabled from April 23rd. And this is Resolution 2023-02.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2024-20, Updating and Establishing Policies and Procedures to Recognize Knowledge, Skills, and Abilities For Monroe County Government Applicants and Eligible Transferring Monroe County Employees.
Second.
All right. Ms. Turner King, you want to speak to the work on this? And by the way, I said the wrong number in the intro. It's 2024-20, right? Yeah, I apologize for that.
Um, so I worked on a draft of the KSA policy to reflect comments from the council. I think it was in the early April, maybe late last February meeting. Um, in essence, the previous version of the policy applied only to applicants with non-Monroe County work history. And the thought process behind this was we wanted to amend the policy so that applicants who did have Monroe County history, who may be returning to the county after leaving briefly, would also benefit from a KSA, which is a knowledge, skills, and abilities request that would determine the compensation level the applicant would come in in. And so what I did was mainly edit section two. Section two previously pertained to individuals who were work, were working part-time for two years and then hired in at one year. And now it makes it so that section two, or section one is for applicants with no Monroe County history and section two is applicants with Monroe County history. So section two would apply to individuals who are employed by the county and then had a break in history, but are not active county employees, transferring from one department to the other. And last year, there was a conversation when we edited the KSA policy about the concern for departments, in essence, poaching, poaching employees. And so this is written to also prevent that. So if you're a current Monroe County employee and you're transferring from one department to another, you can't get a higher KSA. And then secondly, it acknowledges that part-time history is not a hindrance to a KSA, but it could be a benefit depending on what that part-time history is. And in speaking with council office and our personnel administrator, there is, I think, a discussion point that should be had regarding whether part-time history should act as a benefit. So currently, it's drafted so that it's not a hindrance. It could be a benefit. And the question is, do we want it to be a benefit? And I think the concern that comes about is an individual could work part-time and only work, you know, 10 hours a week. If they're working 10 hours a week for five years, does that, does that put them in stance to qualify for a KSA? I also think the staff's concern is if you somehow put an hour limit, which is currently how I drafted it, to say working more than 20 hours or more in a part-time status. That requires a lot of staff effort to go and confirm how many hours the person worked part-time.
So counselors, this has been a process. I appreciate you've worked with Counselor Wilts on this, who's not here to speak to that. But I, I passed those meetings a couple of times and there was a lot of sweat and papers moving and that's always a good sign. Counselors, is there, are there questions, comments on any of this that Ms. Turner King has given us? The sheriff did speak to this earlier in saying that some of the policies that we're doing are helping to attract good quality folks in. So I'll open this up to counselors. Yeah, Counselor Iverson?
Let me kick things off by saying I think the system that we created a while ago where there can be an independent termination by staff is really helpful. I think bringing everything to council really dragged the process down. And so I think, I, I like to see that number five has been duplicated in the additional sections. That's very helpful. I think that's, that's good. In terms of part-time and determining part-time, my opinion comes down to your available hours to